I graduated in a gym.
It was in 2000.
Oh, it's 7:30 now.
That was the last one?
Twenty-three years ago.
I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, June 13th, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And as we do in our public, which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
I'm here on Zoom as I'm traveling on business, and there is no one else in the room with me.
Alderman Klee. Alderman Moran.
I'm present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Como. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Alderman Jettie just joined us.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. I know Alderman Klee won't join us tonight. Alderman Como is at his son's graduation, and also the mayor is at the Nashville High School South graduation this evening, so he won't be here. So we'll skip down to recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of May 9, 2023, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Kenneth J. Lennox, Superintendent, the Edgewood Cemetery, regarding request for joint convention nomination of Brian Morrissey.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for Tuesday, June 27, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Communication has been received from Lisa M. Fotto, Director of Public Works, regarding referral from Board of Aldermen R-23-119 and R-23-124.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have three people signed up. The first is Bobby Bagley.
Good evening. Bobby Bagley, Director for the City of Nashville, Division of Public Health and Community Services, 18 Mulberry Street. I'm here this evening to speak to R-23-131, which is relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional $600,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into our Public Health and Community Services grant activity for fiscal year 2024. This is funding that the state is providing to us for one year that will allow for us to continue to do work that will address the impact of post-COVID impact on our community. And I'm here this evening, as you will hear, this resolution to request a suspension of the rules for passage this evening in order for this amendment to make it to the Governor's and Council Agenda next week. And so I have to have this signed by tomorrow to get it to them. So this work will allow for us to bring on some additional temporary staff for a year for community health workers that will work with our division, but will also support some of our partners in the community in addressing some of the issues that have presented to them with regards to the impact of COVID on their staffing capacity. These community health workers will focus on work with the individuals that are unstably housed in our community and those who are impacted by substance use disorder. They will provide increased outreach efforts in the community in response to this. The $600,000 will also be used to support our partnering organization, our National Youth Council, and allowing for them to do some work that's focused on the youth in our community that have been suffering from increased mental health, behavioral health issues as a result of isolation due to COVID. We will also have the opportunity.
One minute.
We will also have the opportunity to further look at our response to COVID by working with an epidemiologist and our staff and our Public Health Advisory Council to look at how we can make sure our responses going forward will be efficient and effective. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Beth Skare.
Hi. I'm speaking about the ordinance to designate the Public Health and Community Services Division Director as the Chief Public Health Official.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, and Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the Public Health Department because of that ordinance. Bobby Bagley and her Public Health Department have been erasing women. I've been following her emails for two years, starting in August 2021. She said her newsletter refers to people who are pregnant, breastfeeding or trying to get pregnant, otherwise known as women. In October 30, 2021, her newsletter referred to uptake of COVID-19 vaccination by pregnant people has been lower than that of non-pregnant people, also known, pregnant people also known as women. And then in August 2022, her newsletter refers to, this event is an opportunity to strengthen partnerships among hospital-based and community-based services, as well as center the voices of birthing people in their healthcare, also known, birthing people are also known as women. And again, in April 15, 2023, it refers to the perspectives and lived experiences of Black mamas and birthing people, also known as women. And also, in the April 15, 2023 newsletter, there's this whole section pushing the idea that Black women should have abortions, refers to reproductive and birth justice movements. I don't think, I don't think this is what we want our Public Health Department to be pushing, and I don't appreciate the dignity of women being harmed in this way. And not once in any of these years of newsletters was there a reference to impregnating people, also known as fathers and men. I really hope that as she, if this ordinance passes and she moves up to be our Chief Public Health Officer, that she can do better. Thank you.
Next person is Stephen Skare.
Stephen Skare, 111 East Hobart Street, Nashville. And I'm here to speak about designating the Public Health and Community Services Director as the Chief Public Health Official of the city. I've got a concern I've brought here before, and this, whatever happens, whatever decision you'd make, it might be worth addressing. Right now, we have a health equity statement that says inequities are created when systemic barriers disproportionately impact minority groups. Racial, ethnic, linguistic, and sexual minorities have historically been withheld from obtaining resources that need to be healthy, which is a clear barrier to achieving health equity. I want everyone to get the help they need. But for real health equity, what we needed to do is treat people as individuals, not as categories. You could be a poor white man, unemployed and struggling with addiction, and then you're in a press group. And you could be a Black physician with four kids, a great home, and everything's going well, and you're in a press group. So rather looking at, instead of looking at the differences between groups, I hope that the city can look to getting everyone what they need to live a healthy life. I also am very fond of reality, and I'd really like to recognize human females as their own category with their own biological needs. So thank you.
Okay. Communications requiring final approval.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Ordolano.
Could I speak at this input? I wasn't able to get here for 7:30.
You can, but you know you're supposed to sign up and be ready before the meeting.
I was at a church service, and I got here five minutes late. I just wanted to address the supplemental appropriation for half a minute.
Name and address, please.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'd just like to address the supplemental appropriation of the $500,000 into the risk management account. I know that was addressed in a hearing, and I came out and spoke to that, and there was a breakdown given by Director Cummings regarding that matter, which had to do with the IT issues involving the school. But I'd like to, you know, I know what the accounting was given, but I'm also aware of other appropriations in risk management that have to do with this. There was a contract to Charles River to do $100,000 worth of work that happened in early May that I believe is relative to this software issue and this IT matter with the school hack or ransomware. And it would be nice to have a total appropriations of how much money was moved into risk management beyond the $500,000, because I don't feel like the $5,000 was the full appropriation. And I think we ought to understand how much money is being moved over there for that. And I also think that at some point, parents ought to be told what records were compromised, just like a bank would do or a company, you know, they have to report if your information's been compromised, but parents still don't know what was taken on their students, and I think it's reasonable for them to know that. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from John L. Griffin, CFO, Treasurer, Tax Collector, regarding SURF, Nashville Fire Rescue Fiscal Year 2023 purchases.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to approve the change in the SURF list to allow the replacement of a boat trailer, purchase an inflatable rescue boat, and a motorboat for the amount of $32,031.71, and defer the purchase of a 16-foot flat-bottom dive boat for three years with a current SURF value of $16,279 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Daniel R.C. Healy, City Clerk, regarding issuance of warrant to Chief of Police for unlicensed dogs.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I move to accept, place on file, and commit the warrant to the Chief of Police to issue the civil forfeiture by roll call.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Ethics Review Committee, John Fisher, new appointment, term to expire June 13, 2026, 21 Indiana Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03060. Greeley Park Advisory Committee, Stephanie P. Palatine, new appointment, term to expire June 13, 2026, 9 Bartlett Avenue, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03064.
I did talk to the mayor today about John Fisher. His appointment would be as an alternate because the Ethics Committee is already fully slated. So John Fisher would be an alternate. There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 18, 2023 Joint Meeting of the Planning and Economic Development Committee and Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 27, 2023 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 2, 2023 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the May 10, May 11, and May 18, 2023 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 17, 2023 Penachuck Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments. Oh?
Madam Chair, with objection, it may have been misread. Did you include the Joint Meeting, Planning, and Economic Development Committee and the Committee of Infrastructure, or 418, as well as 427? Am I correct in looking at the docket?
Did I not do that?
I don't recall. I'm sorry if you did, but I don't.
I think I did.
She did. Okay. Even these things I can't hear, but sorry.
Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Conservation Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the change from alternate to member of Richard Widhew, 23 Syracuse Road, Nashville, to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2025. Is Mr. Widhew with us this evening? No, he will be sworn in at a later date.
Greeley Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Francis Murphy, 72 Berkeley Street, Nashville, to the Greeley Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 23, 2026. Would you come forward, Mr. Murphy, and take the oath of office? Come right up.
Turn the paper.
Yes.
My friend, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Greeley Park Advisory Committee according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointments of Rosalie McQuade, 17 Reservoir Street, Nashville, with a term to expire December 31, 2026, and William Dubois, Jr., 3 Stratum Green, Nashville, with a term to expire January 31, 2028, to the Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees. Rosalie and William here this evening? Either one? They will be sworn in at a later date.
Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Matthew Roscoe, 17 Nova Road, Nashville, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 9, 2026. Is Mr. Roscoe here this evening? He will be sworn in at a later date.
Nashville Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Judith Carlson, 15 Manchester Street, Nashville, to the Nashville Arts Commission for a term to expire April 1, 2026. Would you please come forward for the oath of office?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Nashville Arts Commission according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire? So help you God. Thank you.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointments of Steve Lionel, 19 Cabot Drive, Nashville, with a term to expire September 30, 2025, and Jack Courier, 6 New Surles Road, Nashville, with a term to expire September 11, 2025, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Are Steve or Jack here this evening? They will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-23-116 relative to the transfer of $25,000 from Department 194 contingency account 70100, general contingency to Department 109 Civic and Community Activities, accounting classification 56, outside agencies for the purpose of providing funding to the Nashville Association for the Elderly.
Alderman Karen.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-116 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 23116 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-119, changing the purpose of up to $354,658 of unexpended bond proceeds from three wastewater projects to the sewer infrastructure improvements project.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-23-111 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23119 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-120, amending the purpose of fiscal, a fiscal year 2023 unlike escrow for the police department.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for final passage of R-23-120 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23120 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-121 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $24,550 of fiscal year 2023 unanticipated revenue into Fund Number 7026 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of R-23-121 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49, and I'd like to be heard on it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this is a result of an automobile accident that resulted in the totaling of a police cruiser, and $24,550 is the amount received from the insurance company, and this resolution transfers it to the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, so the money will be there to purchase a new cruiser.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23121 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-122, authorizing the mayor to enter into a federal aid project agreement with the State of New Hampshire and the town of Hudson for the purpose of rehabilitating the Taylor Falls and Veterans Bridges in a related agreement for reimbursement with the town of Hudson and to accept and appropriate $2.5 million for the project.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-122 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23122 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-124 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $500,000 from fiscal year 2023, assigned fund balance into Department 128 Risk Management Account 89650, transfer to Property and Casualty Self-Insurance Fund.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-124 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. I just want the public to know that all this resolution does is transfer that money into the risk management account. This is not an authorization to spend that money yet. Something, the Finance Committee would have to approve it, so there are other steps that would have to be taken before the money is actually spent. This is just to make the money available, transferring it from the assigned fund balance into the risk management account. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23124 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-23-053, designating the Public Health and Community Services Division Director as the Chief Public Health Official of the city.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Ordinance 2353 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, contrary to an earlier speak, I do not think Director Bagley is erasing women, and I believe that we should change this to the Chief Public Health Official of the city. I think it's the right thing to do. I think she's been doing a great job, and she's deserved it and earned it.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I know I make references to TV shows all the time, but that public comment about this particular made me feel like it was in an episode of Always Sunny in Philadelphia. So I want to thank Frank and the gang for coming out and making their statements heard. But Bobby Bagley, Director Bagley, I've known her for quite some time, and I thought I know her to be a very wise, reasonable person, and she's led the Department of Public Health in a very extraordinary way, in making sure that the public health needs of the city are addressed in a very great fashion. I don't think I have any complaints about what she's doing over there. We both work in the health sector. We partner on multiple things in the city in different roles, and if the mayor thinks that she should be the chief of public health, I think we should approve it. And I do not, I want to make one statement. Just because you get someone pregnant doesn't make you a father. Now, certainly health doesn't make you a man, but we can certainly debate that and what constitute a man or whatever, but there's more moms out there, single moms, that are more manly than any fathers that bailed on their kids. So I just want to make that perfectly clear. Thanks.
Further discussion? Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'll be supporting this wholeheartedly. Bobby Bagley is a treasure for this community, and she's done a ton of great work. I'm really looking forward to having her in this room.
Alderman Lopez.
I also want to voice my support for Director Bagley as pre two of my previous terms. I've been a liaison with the Board of Public Health and worked with Director Bagley. She's been involved in a number of community efforts as well, and she's taking concrete steps to help people in our community that many others can make comments about or express opinions about, but she's putting her actions where her convictions are. So I think that speaks volumes for her a lot more than a couple of emails that you've managed to cherry pick over a couple of years. I don't think there's any kind of a campaign of injustice or anything like that. I think she's extremely fair-minded. She's highly educated. Her accomplishments do speak for themselves, and so I will be supporting her as a candidate. However, I also feel like it should be noted that this isn't a popularity contest. This is a necessary application point where we do have to designate a chief public health official for purposes of grant writing, and letting individual biases or crusades get in the way of functionally serving the people of Nashua doesn't seem particularly well-thought-out. I think she does a great job. I think even tonight, we're seeing the merits of her advocacy and her insightfulness when it comes to getting our city the resources we need to address today's urgent public health issues. So I think her priorities are well-reflected by the needs of our city. Thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I also agree with my colleagues. Director Bagley has done so much for the city, and those who is out there in the community would see that. As a person of color, I understand completely every single thing that she did in doing. As a person of color, I should be the one that says how I feel about a person that is black, because I am. So I kind of resent some of the comments some people made about what she said. She was absolutely right, and I totally support what she said in the black community, which I am in. I never hear a complaint about it, so, and I should be the one that would know. So I'd like to thank Director Bagley for every single thing that she does for our community in the city of Nashua.
Anything else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Absolutely, yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2353 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-23-126, establishing an expendable trust fund to accept donations for the Nashua Multicultural Festival.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Clemmons. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Tebow. Alderwoman, geez, Timmons.
I know it's on approval.
And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-23-127, approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the Nashua Board of Police Commissioners and the five Nashua Police Department Unions regarding a police department recruiting incentive.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Sullivan. Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Clemmons. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Gueye. Alderman Karen. Alderman Tebow. Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-23-128, relative to the acceptance of an electronic scoreboard located at Murray Field, donated to the city by the Kyle Beddinger Memorial Trust, in establishing an expendable trust fund related to the scoreboard funded by appropriations.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Gueye. Alderwoman Karen. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the, oh, Alderman Sullivan, I'm sorry. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works.
First reading of R-23-129, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter into contracts with the South Eagan Valley Transportation Collaborative Nashua Community College, Ripio University, Town of Hudson, and Town of Merrimack for transit services.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Moran. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Tebow. Alderwoman Timmons. And myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-23-130, renaming Los Amigos Park to Reverend Dr. Perkins Los Amigos Park.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Moran. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen. Alderman Tebow. Alderwoman Timmons. And myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R-23-131, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional $600,000 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity fiscal year 2024 COVID-19 enhanced detection.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for a second reading of R-23131 by roll call.
I guess I should have asked for sponsors first. Okay. Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Moran. Alderman Clemmons. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Dowd. Alderman Gueye. Alderman Karen. Alderman Tebow. Alderwoman Timmons. And myself. Given its first, oh, nope, I'm sorry. You had a motion. The motion was to suspend the rules. Discussion on that? Alderman Lopez.
Well, as we heard from Director Bagley at the beginning of the meeting, this was largely circumstantial. There have been very inconsistent guidelines and expectations when it comes to state funding or federal funding that's passed through the state. This is a situation we've seen a couple of times at the Human Affairs Committee, and in ordinary circumstances, I had extended to Director Bagley that if ever we were up against a deadline that was imposed externally on us, where the residents of Nashua might not get resources that could benefit our city, then we would convene the Human Affairs Committee. Unfortunately, Alderman Dowd took all the spots that could possibly have done that. So because we're so deep in the budget committee season, we wouldn't be able to stack another meeting on in a timely enough manner, and the deadline is very short. But I can say that this is very much needed funds. It's not often we have the resources to get community outreachers out there to address the needs of the homeless, and particularly when we're looking at disease and infection control, this is a very important issue. Anybody who's interested in learning more, attend the public health departments or public health board meetings monthly, and our departments are out there making sure that we don't have outbreaks and spreads of any number of things. When you have a large population moving back and forth in and out of our city from other cities in very much underserved situations, it is a risk factor. So in addition, there's a lot of really good work being done by the youth council. I think my colleague Alderman Moran can attest that we've seen a huge surge in struggling youth and youth acuity, and it's something we need to intervene in with every resource that we have. So I appreciate that Director Bagley brought this forward. I know it's unusual that we have to bring it in under suspension, but I think this merits a change in our normal routine to recognize circumstances.
It's not all that unusual, Alderman Lopez, when it's a grant and it's time-sensitive, and it has to get before the governor and council for signature by a certain time, so would I have preferred to go to committee, yes, but it didn't, and I think it's money that will be well-spent. Further discussion? Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays. Second reading of R-23-131, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional $600,000 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity fiscal year 2024 COVID-19 enhanced detection.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend final passage of R-23131 by roll call.
You don't want to recommend it. You want to pass it.
Oh, I guess I was wrong. I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23131 by roll call.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 23131, yeah, is duly adopted. New business ordinances.
None.
Period for general public comment. We have two people signed up. Carolyn Wally.
Madam President, early in the meeting, I took the liberties to sign Carolyn Wally's name to it. Oh, she is here. Okay, I didn't see you, so, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Board of Aldermen. Let me just get my notes up here.
Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name's Carolyn Wally. I'm the Executive Director of Great American Downtown. My home address?
That's fine.
108 Depot Road in Hollis, New Hampshire. I came before you guys tonight to discuss some of the big things that we have going on. We recently had our Taste of Downtown. It was the 27th Annual Taste of Downtown. It happened on Wednesday, June 7th, from 6:00 to 8:30. We had about, you know, over 650 people came to the event. We had 34 businesses take part, eight of which were first-time taste participants. A lot of them were new businesses downtown. If you don't know about this event, it's a signature Nashua event. Like I said, it was the 27th year, and we set up restaurants inside downtown shops where they serve food samples to the flow of attendees for the night. So it gets a two-in-one experience for the attendees. We had three live bands playing outdoors, two on Main Street and one on West Pearl Street. The goal of the event is to create customer acquisition opportunities for downtown businesses by highlighting their products and services. We definitely achieved that goal with 98% of our respondents saying that they will patron one or more stores that they discovered on the night of this event. Many people said that they went into stores that they would have never gone into before. There's a lot of new Nashua area residents that I met with that night, and they all said it was a great event to introduce them to downtown. This is an event that's unique to Nashua. It's the second biggest revenue generator for our nonprofit, Great American Downtown, the first being Holiday Stroll. Our goal for our projected revenue for this event was $20,000. We surpassed that with $24,000, and that money gets put right back into our nonprofit and all the events and programs that we run. The second thing I just wanted to update you guys on is the Nashua Farmers Market, which we do manage. We're going into the fourth week of the season. It happens on every Sunday through October 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the Nashua Public Library parking lot. We welcome a variety of vendors for the mutual benefit of local producers, consumers, and the community. We have about 15 to 20 vendors every week. There's live music and performances every week. We also have a free kids' craft table with the different craft every week. We have a downtown business raffle featuring a different downtown business every week. And just follow us on Facebook, Downtown Nashua, and also on Instagram at the Nashua Farmers Market. Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Sean Rogers.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sean Rogers, 26 Coburn. I find it strange that even though COVID-19 was a national emergency and community emergency, it never, I feel like, brought us together. And maybe that's because of how we handled it and how we never had an open and honest discussion. Instead, the small voices were throttled, and we were subjected to masks and to mandates and to muzzles and to involuntary vaccines for everyone regardless of relative risk, peddled by the powerful and the partisan and the politicos and their pharmaceuticals, pushing compliance like a drug. And shamefully, the well-meaning were weaponized against those with doubts. But perhaps if we had had an open discussion, things could have been different. We could have turned to biology and learned of the survival strategy of slime molds of all things, and learned how their survival strategy mirrors our own, and realized that 100% compliance was never possible, and it was only counterproductive even in emergent circumstances. Perhaps we could have turned to statistics and learned that group decisions, free of polemics and partisanship, are almost always the best decisions since they are free from coercion and draw upon the wisdom of the crowd from the left and the right, from the lowest to the highest, from the most humble to the most erudite. Perhaps we could have turned an eye towards history and learned of similar situations to guide us, such as the plagues of ancient Rome where the pagans who actually practiced self-isolation still died at far higher rates than the Roman Christians who refused to be separated from their mothers and brothers and lovers. And I think that there's a lesson to be learned in how we behaved, in how power was never ceded but only abused, to restrict and to remonstrate, to exacerbate and to aggravate rather than moderate and ameliorate. And even now, after all has been said and done, our country cannot heal because even forgiveness cannot mend without the suture of contrition. So looking back and looking forward, we must learn not only the lessons of mutual compassion and understanding, but also of freedom. Because to be free is to allow others to be free and allow them, as they will, to act or to refrain from action. And so I believe that we, the people, the Board of Aldermen, the mayor, and all governments everywhere, should and would do well to heed true meaning of John Stark's inspired words of "Live Free or Die." Thank you.
Thank you. Remax by members of.
Alder, once again, I was late, and I'm requesting an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll start my clock. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I have a handout here. I just wanted to give the board. I'll just put one here and one on this side. I wanted to address, you know, I know you're all aware of the different right-to-know actions I've had going with the city and my concerns about open records, and I think we haven't moved in the direction that I've hoped we'd move in the last three years. One of the recent lawsuits I had had to do with new market tax credits and records involving new market tax credits, and I put in a right-to-know to Director Cummings' office to get information on whether we were pursuing new market tax credits for future work. I didn't get the response I felt was right, so I filed the lawsuit. The paper I gave you happens to be a contract that we just undertook in December, January, and February with Neil Cannon. Neil Cannon was the specialist hired to assist us with the new market tax credit in 2018 through the very beginning of 2021 when we signed our contracts. He was considered the tax credit specialist, new market tax credit sole proprietor specialist, and he did the work. Unknown to me, we hired him, Director Cummings hired him in December, January, and February without the use of a PO, a requisition, or going through the proper purchasing channels to make such a purchase. We paid him $5,000 a month at a fixed rate with no definition. If you look at page one, you can see the invoice for February 1st, which had to do with the December billing period for 5,000. Page two is the check paid to him, and there is no definition of what he did for 5,000. If you look at page three, it's the approval of a non-Po invoice, which according to the procedures of the 65-page purchasing manual, a non-Po cannot be used for a service like this. It's not considered proper. And then if you look at pages four and five, you'll see the invoices he gave us when he did the work in 2018 for $5,000, and the attached invoice with all the detail of what he did hours and time. I feel it was unlawful and illegal for a purchase, a contract, to be given to Neil Cannon without the public having any knowledge of that contract and knowing what was going on. And, you know, who do you take it to? This language in here says it's unethical, it's unlawful. Who do you take it to? Director Cummings controls the HR department. Director Cummings controls purchasing, although this manual says purchasing is under finance, it isn't anymore. You know, it's wrong. And the citizens, I can't track what was done. I don't know what we paid the man 15,000 for, and I haven't been able to get those records yet. This is an ethics violation, it's a lawfulous issue, and it should be addressed by the board. Thank you.
Remax by members of the board. I'll start over here. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to take a moment to congratulate particularly our graduates from Nashua High North and Nashua High South, as well as all other graduates, you know, from Nashua, and I wish them luck in their future endeavors, whether it be college or joining the blue-collar work fans like I did, but I would like to wish them all the best. And second, to all the fathers of the universe, we don't get the credit. We never took the job to get credit, but there was no proud moment in my life as the day that my wife made me a father, and I enjoy all my children. So I say to my fellow fathers, enjoy your special day, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I'd like to wish my daughter Summer a happy eighth birthday. Today is her birthday. She just got back from Disney World. I didn't get to go. I was stuck working, but I picked her up today from camp to bring her to get a cake, and she said, "Oh, are we going to have presents?" I said, "Absolutely not. Your present was Disney World." She said, "I'd get presents on my birthday." I said, "Well, imagine Disney World was wrapped in a bow, because that's your present." So very happy birthday to her. And she, of course, with Father's Day coming up, she is the girl that made me a dad and a father, and I appreciate her coming into my life. And just like Alderman O'Brien said, I appreciate my wife for making me a father. Without her, it definitely wouldn't be possible. Second, last Board of Aldermen meeting, I knew I forgot to mention something, and I want to thank Nashville Community College, the Registered Nurse Program. I was the keynote speaker for their graduation, for their penning ceremony, and it was a wonderful graduation to be present for and to speak at. I'm a healthcare worker, many of you know that, and working with nurses is integral to the work that I do and I've done throughout my career, and we have a great group of nurses coming out of community college up here in Nashua. And just in general, community college is great. That's where I started my college career and just keep on going. And I know a lot of those nurses will end up being nurse practitioners soon enough. I have a few things. It is, oh, yes. Congratulations to all the graduates of North and South. Hard work definitely paid off for you. And sorry that some of your family could not hear the ceremony over at North the other day. I was saddened to hear that today when speaking with some colleagues. It is Pride Month. I just want to wish everyone who celebrates a happy Pride Month. And over to my left, I think needs recognition of Alderman/Representative O'Brien for helping vote down Senate Bill 272 up at the State House in a very bipartisan way. It's Republicans and Democrats joined together to strike that bill down, which was, it was named something else, but really it was a "Don't Say Gay" bill, similar to one down in Florida. And recognition needs to be given to Alderman O'Brien for helping make sure that LGBTQ kids are protected no matter what, and I appreciate that. I won't go too much into comments that we heard earlier, other than they'll be here every June probably forever, but everyone has the right to exist, everyone has the right to privacy. I think it's actually an amendment in the Constitution. People can identify and be whoever they want to be, and there's no regulating free thought and expression of self. And for those who sit silently when you hear derogatory statements like that in any context, you're just as complicit as anyone else. Whether you, if you can't state it publicly or acknowledge it, you're just as complicit, and I hope people have the strength to stand up to it every day, whether the way you vote, like Alderman O'Brien, or any other expression of support for all people. Thank you.
I skipped over Alderman Sullivan. Sorry about that, Alderman Sullivan, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to congratulate Bobby Bagley on her promotion to Chief Health Officer for the City of Nashville. That's a fantastic promotion and well-deserved. I look forward to taking up similar legislation for the promotion of Administrative Services Director Tim Cummings to Chief Operating Officer as well, so I look forward to that discussion. I wanted to congratulate all of the graduates here in Nashua, both Nashua North last night, Nashua South tonight, and then also Bishop Burton last weekend. I look forward to all of the contributions to the greater Nashua area. And also, finally, I wanted to congratulate our own Alderman Tyler Gueyea, who got pitched over the weekend. Congratulations, Alderman Gueyea, to many happy years ahead. Congratulations.
Alderman Lopez.
I also would like to congratulate Alderman Gueyea, and I would also like to congratulate the graduates of Nashua High North and South, and particularly their parents, because the last couple of years have not been easy trying to navigate the education system, keep your teenagers on track. That's something everybody can be proud of. I wanted to address the legislation that was given its first reading tonight to rename Las Amigos Park to, it's not exactly worded exactly as I intended, but it's honestly kind of a mouthful. So the total wording that I've been working with the families on is Pastor Reverend Dr. Bertha A. Perkins.
Yes.
Las Amigos Park. So it seems like a mouthful, but it's, there's a lot of reasons behind it. One of them is because Las Amigos Park is known to that area, and it's important to the Hispanic community, so we don't want to replace anything. But Reverend Perkins was very much an advocate for celebrating diversity and including people, and she's very important to that street. She was the founder of New Fellowship Baptist Church. I'm sure Alderman Timmons can speak more in detail. She was very respected in the community, and the anniversary of her passing is coming up. So I thought it was important to recognize her in the neighborhood that remembers her and that appreciated her most, while keeping in mind the great impact she had in our city. She was very much a part of the Ethnic Awareness Committee, ultimately turned into the Cultural Connections Committee, the conversation on race and justice. Many, many moments where our city needed a spiritual guide, she stepped forward for. She attended the longest day vigil on at least one occasion, and I've appreciated her support because it can be controversial saying, you know, "We want to remember people who died from an overdose and struggled with SUD," and there's definitely a movement in the city that they just want to look past that. They assume that people who are, you know, defined by their last moments shouldn't be remembered the same way, and that's not true. There's many, many people who care deeply and passionately about that, and I appreciated her support when we were first trying to launch that. So at the block party, the Tree Streets Block Party this Sunday, we are celebrating Juneteenth at Las Amigos Park, and we are celebrating fathers, but we're also going to be recognizing Reverend Perkins. I just wanted to clarify to the public, particularly the New Fellowship community, that there's a couple different ways we're trying to do this. One is there are renovations that are due to be completed at the Las Amigos Park that have been, I think, three years in the running now because of various other projects or issues that are happening in the city. So when those are done, we're working out how to do a commemoration plaque, which will have information about her, have biographical information, a lot more than just the title of a park. But that won't be ready until probably the end of the summer, fall, when those renovations take place. We also do want to recognize her by amending the name of the park, but as this board knows, we can't do things instantly. We have to go through the process of referring it to the Infrastructure Committee, having the discussions, following due process. So that won't be done by her anniversary either. But the third thing that we're trying to do is Mayor Dodges's office is doing a proclamation to recognize her, which is, again, long overdue. So that will be ready by the Tree Streets Block Party, and we will have speakers there, including her daughter, to talk about her life, and there will be members of the community there as well to talk about the different impacts that she had. So I invite everybody to come to that. The Juneteenth is a major part of the Tree Streets Block Party that we're excited about, but we additionally will be having a nonprofit resource fair. We'll be having games for kids over at Nashville Pal. We're going to have a spoken-word exhibition performance, some hip-hop performers too, organized by Flow Free or Die. Anybody who's been to these events knows that the community turns out, Ash Street loves it, and the Tree Streets are something to be celebrated. We did think twice about whether or not we wanted to have this on Father's Day because we knew, you know, throughout the city, a lot of fathers would be traveling, but there's a lot of fathers in the Tree Streets too, and they deserve to have a place they can take their family to. So it was important to us to pull this off. So I invite anybody who's interested or doesn't have plans to try to make their way down to Ash Street. It will close between Central Street and West Hollis from 1:00 to 5:00, and it should be a really good time. The longest day vigil I mentioned earlier is when we remember those that we've lost to substance use disorder. We stand in solidarity to them, and we commit ourselves to policies to helping our residents and those families that struggle with it. That is going to be next Wednesday here at City Hall at 6:00, so you're all invited to attend that as well. And that's it for me. I appreciate all of your time and attention.
Alderman Juddi.
Thank you. I'd like to make note of some recent deaths of notable individuals. The first is Jack Atkinson. Jack's father, Arthur Atkinson, started Brons Craft, which was, which still is, a very important company in Nashua. And Jack lived in Nashua for a long time, and he became, he followed his father as president of Brons Craft until he retired. He eventually moved to Hudson when he remarried, and where he lived in Hudson was on property that was owned by my grandfather, who had a farm on Webster Street in Hudson, and Jack ended up, and that's where my father grew up, and Jack ended up living on that property. And, you know, he had invited my father to return and kind of revisit, you know, where he had grown up. And so, you know, Jack did a lot for the community. He was a well-known and outstanding member of the Nashua Rotary Club and the first church. And at his funeral, the minister told the people attending that Jack regularly asked the minister whether there was anyone that the minister knew who needed help because Jack wanted to help them, and he did. So that was a great legacy that he left, and my condolences to his family. The second is a resident of Ward 5, George Pitaris, who was born and lived in Nashua all his life, and, you know, on West Hollis Street, there's, you know, there are streets named after, there's one street named after the Pitaris family. They owned a lot of land on West Hollis Street, and George and his family owned the Pitaris Farm, you know, where we used to get our vegetables during the summer, and we're going to miss that. And my condolences to his wife, Foteen, and his children. The third person I'd like to mention, who is very much alive, and that is Dean Shalup, who we recently had a celebration at the library on this past Sunday, celebrating his long career at the Nashua Telegraph. And, you know, we all mourn the demise of the Telegraph, as does Dean, but Dean is now contributing to the New Hampshire Union Leader. So congratulations to Dean on a successful career. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to briefly wish everyone a happy Pride Month. Unfortunately, I will be away on vacation, so I won't be able to participate in the parade, but I wish everybody a great time and a very happy Pride Month. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you very much. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Wally on a lovely Taste of Downtown. I was there with my family. I hobbled around in downtown and had a really great evening, so wanted to say thank you for that. I'm looking forward to going to the Farmers Market. My second piece, I'm hoping everyone will indulge me. I know I'm a little, I'm usually short and sweet, but this is something I'm really passionate about, so it's been brought up that it is Pride Month, and earlier reality was brought up, so I want to talk about that. I want to talk about what the reality is for our LGBTQ community. When I was a child, the reality is that if you were heteronormative, you might be afraid to talk about who you loved. You may have stayed in the closet. There were targets of bullying and violence because of who they loved. And I want to say we're doing better, and we're trying, but the reality is these individuals in our city still feel unsafe every day. When people come out to support banning books like Gender Queer, or to enforce disclosure of pronouns, or use their public comments to further their hateful agendas, these individuals feel attacked, unsafe, and othered in their own city. So the reality is, next Saturday, June 24th, our Pride Festival is more needed now than ever. I'll be there with my family. I'm going to have plenty of sparkles and rainbows, and that's not because I love a party, I do, but because I want every citizen of this city to know that they are accepted and loved exactly as they are. That's the Nashua I know and love, and if that's your Nashua, I hope to see you there.
Alderman Dowd.
Just a few quick things. I was at Dean's party as well on Sunday, and had several conversations with him over the years, and I knew his father, Mike, who was also a reporter with the Telegraph years ago, probably more years ago than some of you were born, but a long time ago.
I was only born one year.
And that was a nice event. The other thing I'd like to wish Alderman Gueyea the best in his marriage. I've worked with his mother and his grandmother for years, BAE Systems, and know them well, and I'm sure that they're very happy now that he has settled down. The other thing is, I want to congratulate Bobby Bagley on her reposition. Bobby I've worked with over the many years and has always been the betterment of the city of Nashville. worked with over the many years and has always been the betterment of the city of Nashua. And I want to congratulate the graduates of both Nashville High South, Nashville High North, and wish them well in their endeavors as they move forward into their new careers or college agendas. And I think that they will do well, because I know they've had an excellent education here in Nashua. Also, I hear all these conversations about the L B G D community. I can tell you, because I have grandkids in the school system, the kids handle this a hell of a lot better than most adults. They understand. They know. They realize, and they have open conversations. But yet, we seem to have adults that want to tell them what they should be saying rather than what they actually know from experiencing things. So I just wish that we wouldn't be trying to force our schools to do things that aren't broken. That's all I have.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start off by congratulating the North and South graduates, and Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there, including mine, who there is no way I could have gotten through the past probably week without them, as mentioned by other folks. I ended... I got married on Friday night at a small church wedding, and on Saturday, we had a larger gathering and ceremony, and it was... It was really special to be surrounded by a bunch of family and friends for that. And it was nice, because I got to marry my best friend, and that is something that was a long time coming. We've been... We were dating for about five years, and then we were able to do this. I proposed about a year and a half ago, and it all led up to this, and it was just a really great weekend to be with our family and friends. She's one of the hardest-working City Hall employees here in the H R department. So for all the other City Hall officials watching here, I am Govea T., she is Govea E. If you send stuff to her that's supposed to come to me, it will be really weird, but if you send Board of Aldermen stuff to her, it will still get to me. So thank you all for the positive comments, and it's a pleasure to serve with everybody. Thank you.
Alderman Karen.
Thank you. I want to wish Alderman Govea a wonderful, long life. We had... My husband and I just celebrated our 48th wedding anniversary, and it's wonderful when you marry your best friend, so I wish you the best. The other thing is, I want to thank everyone for approving the $25,000 for the senior center. As you know, the building does belong to the city, but the senior center with this money has been able to upgrade lights and carpeting and doing the floors, and now being able to professionally steam clean their kitchen at least twice a year, which is really, really great. So thank you so much for that. I also want to let you know about the passing of former Mayor Donald Davidson's wife, Chip Davidson, who passed away last week, who had been very, very ill. But she was the one behind the mayor, so she pushed him along. So my condolences to all of her sisters. The other thing is, also, congratulations to Nashville High and Nashville South and North. I also attended my granddaughter's graduation in Weir, New Hampshire, and I sat there and did not know they were shooting off cannons. So that can be a little scary when you're out in the field, so at least you're not having that over there at Stella Stadium. Thank you.
Alderman Thibault.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple things. One thing that was mentioned during the going around the chamber is that we were going to have legislation to make Director Cummings the COO. I'm pretty sure that was already... No legislations needed for that, unless things have changed. So I think he's currently the COO. The next thing is to, I think it's Alderman Jettie's point, I saw Dean Shalup and Tom King, actually, at the Black Heritage Trail, and I tried to corner them to see if they could just make a Nashua newspaper together and just, you know, not retire or not stay with the newspapers that they're going to be with, but that did not happen. So it is Pride Month, and with Pride Month comes, you know, a lot of nonsense that we would expect, which we shouldn't expect. You know, I got an email, I think it was this week or last week, from someone that, you know, called the Pride Parade... And you guys all got the email.
Yeah.
A Pride prance, whatever that may mean, but I take it as a negative connotation of pride, with some other things in there, including a post of what is a woman and what is not. And I think it's abhorrent that someone would even do that, and that, you know, some people think that's funny. Now, to me, I mean, you can call me what I want, whatever you want to call me. I don't really care. You know, obviously, I know who I am. I'm not part of the community, but I 100% support it, 100%. And so I don't care what people call me, but when they start using transphobic and homophobic words, it's just a whole downer on something that really should be supported and celebrated, who people are, and let them be who they want to be. I don't see why that's such a problem. Everybody wants to tell everybody what they should be and what they shouldn't be. Let them be who they want to be, whether, you know, however you want to be. And, you know, I will be there at the Pride Parade, barring any unforeseen circumstances. I'll be there at the festival afterwards in the library parking lot. I was there last year. I was in the front of the parade, wholeheartedly supporting all their rights. And that's what we should do as people. It doesn't matter if you're... If it's a race thing or if it's a gender thing, I think we should be supporting everyone. Everybody's a human being. It's not that difficult in this world where kids get it better than we do, and that's... It's just horrible. It's a horrible thing. So let's celebrate that next, you know, in two weeks and a week and a half, whenever it is now, and, you know, let Nashville come together to celebrate the event. And also, lastly, I want to congratulate the Nashville South and Nashville North kids, especially Nashville South, as a... I didn't have a child there this year, but my son's girlfriend Ella did graduate tonight, so congratulations to her and both of you. You know, I have purple on tonight for the... I know some of you are North, but purple Panthers. So, thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to try to make this quicker. I don't think so, because now I'm on the floor. So anyway, I'm going to thank my colleague, Tom Lopez, for mentioning Dr. Brether Amada Perkins renaming the park. But let me tell you a little bit about her. Reverend Perkins was a member of the American Baptist Church and the National Baptist Convention USA Inc. She was also active member of the United Baptist Convention of Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and New Hampshire, where she was the first female pastor to serve in the convention and held the position of president of the Women's Auxiliary. Later served on the executive board as the first vice president. Pastor Perkins, she was my pastor, by the way, was active in several organizational activities. One, that she was very proud to have worked with the Southern New Hampshire Outreach for Black Unity, which we call O B U, and the collaborative work with their other organizations and individuals in the state to make Martin Luther King Civil Rights Day official holiday in the state of New Hampshire. So it's fitting to have that. That's number one thing I have to say. As well as the Tree Street Parade is in collaboration with June 13th. June 13th... Juneteenth is Monday, June 19, 2023. It's the oldest known celebration making the end of slavery in the United States, in case people don't know. First recognized by the state of Texas, it is also known as Freedom Day, Juneteenth Independent Day, Emancipation Day. So that's one of the things I want to say. Also, I want to say Happy Pride Day. I will be there. I don't know a family that do not have someone in that particular group. I know I have several, so, you know, it's no big thing to me. So I will be there on that day. I want to congratulate my grandson, who graduated from North every year for the last, what, 20 years? I had somebody graduating, because I have a bunch of upstairs that are grandkids. So congratulations for the Nashville High School North and South tonight. And mostly, I want to congratulate Director Bagley, because it's well deserved. Well deserved. A little late coming, but well deserved. She's very instrumental in the community, and I can't say enough about her. I know what she does in the community, and it is well deserved. And so we talked about yesterday's Women Veterans Day, right? And I am a Women's Veteran. I don't know if you know we celebrate that, but we do celebrate that. And mostly, Happy Father's Day. I think that's it. I was trying to rush through it.
I too would like to thank the...
I didn't mean to interrupt. Sorry.
You did, Tom. I would like to appreciate the students that graduated last night and tonight from North and South. My granddaughter was one of them. I was at the Nashville North graduation last night. It was... It's emotional, you know. You see these kids grow up, and now they're going off to college. It's just... It's pretty nice. Our schools do a good job. My granddaughter graduated 12th in her class. I mean, you know, if you put into your kids' education what you want them to get, they're going to get it. Our schools are good. Our schools are very good. Happy Pride Month. And what else do I have? Dean Shalup. Dean Shalup will be missed. I'm sure we'll still see him. I run into him at, you know, a bar every now and then. Not that I go to bars often, but I do once in a while run into Dean. He'll be missed. He's a great guy, really great guy. And also, congratulations to Alderman Govea and his bride. Hope you have a long, happy marriage.
I forgot something.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to give some logistics for the Pride Parade, because we won't be in the chamber again before. So the Pride Parade is from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. on the 24th. 2:00 is when we push off from Elm Street. So if any of you want to join us, we'll be assembling between 1:00 and 1:30. Any of you is Board of Aldermen. If you've signed up to be in the parade, you can also be there to assemble from 1:00 to 1:30. And then the festival will go from about 2:30. It takes about a half an hour till 6:00 p.m. in the parking lot of the library.
Alderman Timmons.
One last thing. Thank you. Let's talk about health. A conversation around health and wellness to create the healthiest grade of Nashville community. The Community Health Assessment Conversation is an hour and a half session. You get free dinner and goodie bag for those who attend. It is Thursday, June 22nd, at the Boys and Girls Club from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And Thursday the following week, June 29th, at the Nashville Public Library, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. So hopefully, you'll be able to make it.
Alderman Lopez.
Sorry. So I was very much into my block party thing, and I wanted to make sure everybody knew also that this Thursday on PBS, Nashville is going to be front and center and highlighted. Our history is going to be gone over very thoroughly, and I would urge anybody to tune into it. It's this Thursday, June 15th, at 7:30 on PBS. They're doing... They're featuring Nashville in their Our Hometown segment. Some of us got to see a preview of it, and it's great. So I would highly encourage people to check out Our Hometown on PBS this Thursday at 7:30, unless Alderman Dow has a meeting.
Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. Hi, Joe.
Oh, sorry. One minute. I missed committee announcements. Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow is the Health Committee meeting here, 12:30 on the End of Auditorium. So those who want to know all about the health and all that boss under Director Bobby Bagley should join that meeting tomorrow, 12:30 at the End of Auditorium.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I'm going to take up a few more days. We have a public hearing on the FY 2024 budget on June 20th at Nashville High School North at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. We have a wrap-up session for the Budget Committee on the FY 2024 budget at 7:00 p.m. June 21st in the Aldomatic Chamber at 7:00. Our next regular Budget Committee meeting is at 7:00 p.m. June 26th in the Aldomatic Chamber. And the final action on the FY 2024 budget will be at the next Board of Aldermen meeting, June 27th, hopefully, at 7:00 p.m. right here in the Aldomatic Chamber.
Alderman Kelly.
I will remind us at the 27th meeting, but we are going to hold personnel on July 3rd.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m., P E D C will be meeting. We'll have a public hearing on O 23055, which is amending the overlay for the rezoning of land up on Amherst Street. Months and months of planning for this, and I hope anyone who has public input can come out and discuss it and ask questions, and then hopefully we'll have a good conversation at the committee level. See you there.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you again, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the June 13th meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Thibault.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, one day.
We are adjourned at 8:57 p.m. Thank you, everyone. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there.